Welcome guests tonight and administrators that are here tonight, thank you for coming out in this wonderful rainy evening. Of course, we need the rain. Alright, the purpose of this meeting is to conduct the business of the Gettysburg Area School District. Public comment is welcome. The issues will be referred to the appropriate board committee or administrator. Comments will be summarized in the official board minutes, which will be available by contacting the business office. Please take a moment to silence your cell phones and other electronic devices. Thank you. There will be an executive session following this regular meeting to discuss negotiations and personnel. Mr. Collins, all board members are present tonight. Would everyone please rise for the pleasant evening?
Pleasant evening to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next, we need to approve/accept the minutes. Are there any additions or corrections to the September 3rd and September 16 minutes? I hear none. Now entertain a motion to accept the minutes as written. Second, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Any notices and communications from any board members? Is there any? No citizens want to participate tonight? Alright, thank you. Board committee
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of quick things from the policy committee. Next school board meeting, the board operations policies, the zero-zero policies, triple digits, zero-zero-one through zero-one-two, hopefully will get final approval and then our first meeting in November will reflect kind of the new way that we'll run our board meetings. And then also, just an FYI, we have a meeting tomorrow afternoon at four o'clock with our committee and we'll continue going through some more policies that will be recommended to us and being reviewed by the administration. Thank you.
Mr. President, the finance facilities committee met on September 19th. We talked about the budget calendar dates for this fiscal year. We also looked at the five-year capital plan and there were some items that needed to be moved forward on the schedule. There are actually items that are on the agenda for approval such as the copier replacement, there's a truck that is replaced, and a study of the HVAC system for this building in particular. So we will meet the third Thursday of October. We are next meeting.
Alright, thank you. The other reports. Alright, Dr. Curran.
Good evening. We decided to use our early dismissal time on Friday to ask all of our employees, professional employees, to engage in the re-certification of the child abuse clearance training and use 2019 as a reset year. So most of us were engaged in that time. We did give some flexibility if employees wanted to use that time, but the way that it must be completed by the end of this month. So it was ended up being advantageous for something we needed to have teachers do, so we took advantage of that time, so thank you for that. And last week, we had a group of teachers and reading specialists and myself engage in an interview with a reporter from the Seattle Times. She came to look at a school in Pennsylvania that was, in a district in Pennsylvania that's implementing reading by what the science of reading is telling us are best practices because they're trying to adopt some of the practices in Seattle. So it was a nice opportunity and I'll share the article when it's published. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to say congratulations for the homecoming festivities. Last week was never a small effort, whether it's administrators or staff or facilities folks, it's a complete team effort. So congrats on putting another homecoming together. It's always nice to come away with a W also on a Friday night. And I just wanted to thank our community at large for going through the two-hour delay, or the two-hour early dismissal I guess it was, on Friday that helped us with our dismissal procedures, enabled those to happen smoothly without the traffic that we were expecting between the various buildings. So thanks for everybody for allowing that to occur and everything seemed to go really well. All the buses went a lot quicker and the dismisses went a lot quicker than I think if we'd waited until the normal dismissal time. So that worked out pretty well and I hope that the event went well for the history of it. End of this month, we'll be starting the Gettysburg Area Leadership Academy. We have nine teachers who have committed to being part of the first cohort. So it was nice, it was cross-section across all the various organizational levels and from different backgrounds. So we look forward to engaging in that this year and then using the GATEP group to see how it goes throughout the year and then adjust for the following year. But I hope it's going to be a good program and I hope that not only the district benefits, but I hope that the folks who are committed to it are also going to benefit in terms of some of the experiences that they'll have this year as well. Couple of things, couple highlights on the agenda tonight, information from the last meeting. We have approval of you participating in the tech prep consortium tonight and the Articles of Agreement. Littlestown School District approved those last week or two weeks ago. Fairfield Board meets tonight, we meet tonight. And then I believe that we're meeting in Cala Lago Valley the following week. So we have the original document being passed around. So that's great news because we've been working on it for a couple of years. So pretty excited for the opportunities that'll lead to for our students in the coming years across the county. But obviously, obviously the benefit for our students here in Gettysburg as well. And you also saw, probably on the agenda, you saw that there is a research project for information tonight for approval at the following meeting. The research project does comply with board policy. It's one of the first policies we changed whenever I came into this role a couple of years ago, just to make sure that we were kind of protecting everybody's staff, kids, in terms of information and those kind of things. So I know that Dr. Bartlett's here this evening and the elementary principals are supportive just in the project. So just a couple of things to highlight. Thanks, appreciate it.
Thank you. Alright, we'll move on to our business items for the night, starting with personnel, items 9.1 and 9.2.
Second?
Okay, here to none. Vote. Kathleen?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Alice?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Silvan?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
And I vote yes. We move to curriculum and programs, and this is what Dr. Curran was discussing, items 10.1 and 10.2 concerning the Adams County Technical Institute. Sean, the director, is here tonight, so if you have questions before we, you know, after we make a motion, entertain a motion, and then we can have a discussion and Sean can answer questions. Is there a motion to accept items 10.1 and 10.2? Okay, first and second now. Discussion or any questions that you might have before we vote? We're all good? Sean, is there anything? Oh, I'm sorry.
Actually, I'm going to ask Sean, if you could just talk a little bit about how this will unfold. You know, Gettysburg has a center, a facility here. Cala Lago Valley has just opened a facility and there are, I believe, separate programs, not overlapping programs. Can you just elaborate on that a little bit?
Right, right. There are not overlapping programs. They really aren't duplicating anything that we do here. So we hope to expand our programs by tapping into what they've done at their school in the last year. So they've committed to offering a welding program for the county students starting next school year. And we just hope to, you know, continue the spirit of cooperation between the districts and continue to grow the programs in the coming years.
Sean, correct me if I'm wrong, then Fairfield is offering something as well, first responders or EMS type of training?
Right. Fairfield has an EMT program and they are taking students from other school districts. However, they don't meet the minimum number of hours to be an approved program by the state. But yes, they do have some EMT training in Fairfield.
So then, it is just say that the programs offered will increase in number and even diversity, whether or not, say Littlestown or Meridian open a facility, or whether the facilities then expand where they're at or whatnot?
Right. For the next several years, at least, I think we're looking at, you know, using the facilities that we have already at the different high schools and growing the programs that way. I think we do have to be a little careful about what programs we offer. We don't want to steal students from ourselves, basically. Like if we have a, you know, we have a building trades program, so we wouldn't want to open an electrical program and a plumbing program and we'd just be competing against ourselves for students to keep those programs full. So we have to be smart about how we grow the programs. But if the workforce need is out there and the student interest is there, we can continue to grow, you know, our programs and meet the workforce need.
And one other question, I think. So the way that a technical program continues to grow is meeting with community partners, businesses. So can you talk a little bit about perhaps where we are right now with that?
Well, last month, you approved our occupational advisory and local advisory committee membership. We have over 200 business and industry representatives that support our programs and those business and industry representatives meet twice each school year and they provide guidance and advice for us on everything from facilities, equipment, supplies, curriculum, safety, anything the instructor needs to make that program relevant in meeting the workforce needs of the community. So those business and industry partnerships are essential. And that's, to me, that's what makes our programs different than just a tech ed elective type program. It's in-depth, it's rigorous, it's relevant, and it meets business and industry needs.
Thank you for elaborating and thank you for the work that you've done with building partnerships also with the school districts. Dr. Parry, I think this was thrown right into your lap as you came right into the district. It was one of the first things, the hurdle to overcome. So thank you for building those relationships also with the other superintendents and Mr. Roff, thank you. You've been on that committee for quite some time. I remember as well, another board member, Mr. Hewitt, was a part of that for some time, so.
Mike, sure.
So thank you. It's those small tasks that pull us together, so thank you for your efforts on that.
That wasn't the details. The fun part is the visioning. It's great to try to come up with programs that will help students in their future. It's just a matter of working through all the sticky details, but we've got to get a good start and everybody's really excited to be where we are now.
As advisory council bitters are pretty tasty, too.
As a follow-up to your comments about Fairfield and not having the number of hours, is there a specific reason you're aware of as to why they didn't meet that requirement?
Well, the minimum requirement is 720 hours even for a one-year program and that's quite a lot to get to in one year. You almost have to have a full day program. So to be an approved program requires, you know, the state wants to see a significant number of hours of practice. So they just, they have the coursework there, but they have the technical coursework, but I think we need to add some supplementary courses to go along with it and get toward these. If you think about like our engineering technology program in the high school, that program has 12 different courses that make up that program to meet the minimum part of hours by the state. So it's, I think they're working on getting to the point where they meet the minimum hours, but they're just not there to do it.
Okay, so that, then putting two and two together in most cases equals four, no students from any other Adams County school district most likely would be capable of sending their students there because they wouldn't receive the amount of hours or split between the two or?
They, we can still send students there. I think we have one or two Gettysburg High School students that go there for that program. It's just it's not what's called an approved program by the state. Yeah, it's just that you can have that program and you can take kids from other schools. It's just not eligible to receive the CT student subsidy and Perkins money that are approved programs.
Okay, great, thanks.
Sure.
Any other questions? Alright, we'll vote on those two items. Ken?
Yes.
Alice?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Silvan?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Again, thank you, Sean. Just a reminder, the board now that that's been approved and the other schools come through, they'll be, they will have a board and each district has to have representatives on that board. We'd like two. Basically, the reason why two is in case one can't be at a meeting, it resolves. Basically, it's like a substitute kind of. But I would prefer both would attend if you could. But we only get one vote. If you read the articles, each district gets one vote, but we each get two board members. So we need to think hard because we need to have that accepted over at the next meeting in October because of the timeline. Because when, I forget, Sean, when do we actually, when does that board actively begin?
We're going to meet November 20th, with all the new appointees and try to get things going.
Right. Okay. Alright, any other questions? Alright, the information I did under there was the cyberbullying study that Dr. Parry mentioned. Thank you, Dr. Bartlett, for coming out. This is our information item. Hopefully you all looked over that information and now would be the time to ask questions to Dr. Bartlett. Maybe first, Dr. Bartlett, you'd like to just give us just a, just a real quick brief overview of what it is you're going to do again, this study?
You want me to hear at the mic?
Oh, okay. If you could go to the mic so that everybody could hear. Doesn't it feel just a little bit, share with everybody what it is you want to do?
Yes, hi. Yeah, we, yeah. So first, thank you all for reading all the stuff that I sent you. I know it was, I printed it all out this morning. It was kind of lengthy, so thank you. To be brief, what I want to do is conduct a study where I'm looking at a child's first cyberbullying experience and trying to figure out what factors lead to a child making the decision to send harmful messages online. And so the general idea is I would assess third and fourth grade students and I would just give them several questionnaires and the items were in front of you in one of the packets. I would send, give them the questionnaires and then a year later, I would give them the questionnaires again. And the idea is if they said, no, I don't do any of these mean things in wave one, and then they did decide, yeah, I do those things in wave two, then I could try to figure out what made the change from a yes to a no or a no to a yes, or what kept kids stable. So if they said no, no, or yes, yes, I can kind of track these things and figure out why. And so what I'm doing here today is, what's in front of you is the proposal that lays out exactly how I want to do it and the rationale for why I want to do it. The global idea, though, is that, you know, we have to understand that kids in the digital age today are doing these things and they are doing them as young as third and fourth grade, if not younger. And so if we can kind of figure out why kids are doing it now, my research, my lines of research have always been, if we can figure out why we're doing it now, then we can figure out how to stop it. And so that's what my study's all about.
Thank you. Questions?
One, maybe this one. So in the field right now, in the area of research, have you found other studies similar to this where they're looking at identifying students who are, have the potential to communicate harmful or mean messages online?
Yes, so there's a whole, yes, there's a large literature on this. It depends on what age group you're asking about, though. So I've published, my gosh, many articles, over 20 articles, and my colleagues have published many as well, looking at high schoolers, middle schoolers, emerging adults of college kids, basically. I've even done some studies looking at older individuals, older being 35 and above, so me, and above. So we've done that work. There's only been one study that I'm aware of that has published, that was published recently on a sample this young, of third and fifth graders, and it was done in, I believe, a New Hampshire school district. And what they did is they found that if you, if a child owns a cellphone, as a third grader through fifth grader, if you own a cellphone, you are significantly more likely to cyberbully in general. And so that was the only study that I've seen that has been done with this age group. However, they only looked at cellphone use, at least that's what they published. I'm looking at that plus a whole bunch of other stuff that could contribute because that can't be the only reason why kids do these things. So to answer your question, yes, there's a lot of research on the predictors of cyberbullying. I've done a lot of it. From, at a younger age, though, only one study that I'm aware of has tapped students this young to be in their study. Thank you for your question.
In reading through kind of your process, sorry, where is it coming from? In reading through your proposal and kind of the need for that niche in the study, I appreciate it. I'm looking forward to, like you said, after two years and having that data, maybe helping that implement in, you know, things we can do in the school district to help prevent that or, you know, education for the community on cyberbullying. That's very powerful. So thank you for bringing it to the school district.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, it's kind of like, you know, the senate hearings where like a person's up in front and then like a senator talks and the person's like looking around. Like where's, who's talking? There you go. But thank you for your comment.
I'll wait till you can, just quick. And I did read your information. I appreciate it because it was pretty elaborate. The retention of the data from grade four to grade five thereafter, could you just elaborate a little bit more on what happens with that? Because I read the U. I think, I don't want to forge your mouth, it's retained by you on a computer in a locked office and it's destroyed after the data's entered into a database that will allow you to correlate the answers. Correct?
Yeah, yeah. So what's going to happen, so let me be clear that when I said, that is specific to the names of the children. So what I'm going to have to do, because it's longitudinal, I need to find a way to link their wave one and wave two datas together. And so the only way that I've found to be successful in that is to have a child write on my single master list their name and then I give them like a random numbers and letters. Then random numbers and letters show up on their questionnaire so I can match them. So that way, when a student comes up to me at wave two, it's just like, hey, I'm done. Then I can just, oh, what's your name? And then, you know, just copy the random numbers and letters over. Now that will be retained by me, only by me, in my office, locked for the whole, like, year, basically. Once wave two data is collected and done, that's when that sheet of paper gets destroyed. It's just their names. The actual questionnaires themselves that they fill out, that are anonymous and confidential and don't include their names, those don't get destroyed. Those, the American Psychological Association says I have to keep those for five years post-publication. Then I can do with them what I want. So, but the names will be destroyed.
Do you, in your past, both with you or with any of the studies?
Yeah.
Have you run into an issue where you put in an issue of mandatory reporting or data that's been captured that hits the alarm bells where we're breaking from research to something that needs immediate action?
It's a great question. And the answer is, for me, no. And the reason is, in terms of mandatory reporting, I am ethically required to report on things like, you know, like abuses and/or things like suicide, suicide ideation, suicidal thoughts like that. So, but I never measure any of those things. I've never measured those things because those tend to be the consequences of being bullied, not the predictors of being a bully. So I've personally never had to run into that just because of the nature of the variables that I studied. So, so no, I've never had to deal with that. And then for this study, I won't have to deal with that either.
And that's what I was asking, not seeing the questions, it leads me to think that you run a possibility of having something come across on a paper that would raise some flags?
Uh, no. All the questions are in the packet somewhere. What you'll see is they're basically like demographic questions. There's questions about technology use, like do your parents own phones and stuff? And then after that, it's, do you do these harmful behaviors online? Then after that, it's, do you think it's okay to do them? Are you anonymous online? And do you believe that stronger kids are now irrelevant because it's an online world? But those are, that's it. And there's only 35 of us.
She, she can be there on her ice. So the minimal risk in your paper is just whether or not those students would have some self-reflection if they acknowledge or realize that they may be?
Yes. Yeah, and that's, and that's going to, that's always the minimal risk that I run, even with the college students. I'm here at Gettysburg College, yeah. So thank you for your question.
Thank you.
Dr. Bartlett, first of all, I think this is a very timely issue and it's a real problem and I've had firsthand experiences in the school system with this, even at the elementary level. And sometimes also with parents at the older age level. But I'm interested in how Gettysburg, well, first of all, I commend Gettysburg School District for cooperating with you and having this study done and using that information with our kids. But it would also be great for us, and I'm not sure if I remember reading, how the findings will be communicated and possible, you know, interventions that we can implement and utilize to help curb some of this, or curtail some of these issues related to cyberbullying. So again, I thank you for doing this and I deeply commend Gettysburg School District for cooperating with you. But I'm interested in how those findings will be communicated and what we, in what way, shape, or form that can be done.
Well, thank you for your comment. I also commend the school board. So thank you all for meeting, for meeting with me and thank you Superintendent for kind of urging this along. In terms of the findings, so the idea is that after the study has been conducted, then I'll do all the, so this is going to be after wave two is done, then I'll do all the data analysis. And once the data analysis is done, the first step I'm going to do is prepare a report that goes to, I think, the school board, if I'm reading that correctly. It goes to the school board for you all to read. And then from there, I basically offer my services to be whatever you guys need it to be, whether that is meeting with the PTO or of any school, also doing parent meetings. I've done a parent meeting at the middle school, I think it was three years ago. I think I did one on this topic as well. Also, what I've done in the past is I've written down recommendations for like what is a good next step regarding how to curtail this thing. And I'll base those recommendations off the data. A good example of all of this is I ran a study up at Upper Adams, so in the Big Leville School District. And that's exactly what I did because they're, they were starting to implement their one-to-one with the computers in the high school. And so we went through about how to give their, it was basically like a little class on basically etiquette that was related to bullying, not just related to like, don't sext your friends or don't download illegal music, like, you know, so it's that kind of thing. So I'll be more than willing to do that. The end goal, of course, is that if the data looked good and promising, then I'm aimed to publish this, in which case then I'll send the school board the publication if it gets accepted. However, should be noted that I will, for the sake of anonymity across the board, I don't ever mention data was collected from Gettysburg Area School District. I'll just say something like a small rural, like, southern Pennsylvania, like I'll kind of do it like that. So I don't know if that answered your question, but?
That does, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, hi. Thank you for this. And you know, I can't help but wonder, could there be an unintended consequence of giving third and fourth graders ideas of cyberbullying? These are young kids, yes, many of them may have cellphones already. I don't know the data on that. But I look at some of the questions, do you think it's okay if he has a fake name and talking to another online? And just something that I think we need to be cognizant of are the unintended consequences, again, of giving ideas to the kids of nefarious things to do.
I agree 100%. I think that- I think that that's a legitimate concern and one that, one that should go into your thought processes as we, as you vote on this in two weeks from now. What I will say is that even though that is a concern, it's already started even before this. So my son, for example, he's a second grader at James Geddes. He's already talking about how, he comes home from school saying things like, you know, when we're online, we shouldn't be telling people where we live, and we shouldn't be telling people our names. So they've already started, whether formally or informally, kind of these educational ideas about netiquette and how to behave online. And so the extent to which these will be newer, novel ideas to them, for some, sure, for others, they're already getting it, and it's already happening. So I don't, it is a, it is a potential consequence, however, I'm hoping it's not a big enough one that deters this study. Finally, I will say that the very end of, this is going to have to be at year two, at the very end of year two, I do go through a very thorough debriefing with them about how these things, you know, these things are bad, and how we shouldn't do them, and it makes people feel bad, and all those things. But we have to wait until the end of the study, so I can't tell them what it's about mid-study, if that makes sense. So thank you for your interest. It's a valid one, and one that we shouldn't ignore.
Yeah, I think also kindergarten, first grade, second grade, they start discussing with citizenship or good character, and because bullying can happen at a very young age, I mean, even preschool, it's, so the ideas may be perpetuated or instigated by a question, but some of those behaviors are in place before their meaningful sacrifice.
And you know, one of the things, too, and this is what I personally hope happens, but I don't know, is if, you know, a student does my study, remember, they have to go through parental consent and student consent to do all these things. My hope is that, you know, the parents will be just like, hey, how was the study today? Or the kid will come home and just be like, hey, I did science today. And that's what my son would say, we did science today. And then I'd be like, well, what'd you learn? And then we could talk about these things, and it opens up a dialogue about how it's not okay to do, create a fake name, or whatever the specific item was. So that's the hope, but-
I would hope for you that if this votes, the way I think the district gets behind it, because I think your survey or your study's going to be successful if you have a widespread participation in not just a certain block of the community. I think you'll get a truer picture of what actually is going on. And that would be my worry, that, you know, Dr. Perrin, if we vote, which way we vote, that he would be, in my sliver, would give a supplemental way to, maybe through the principals, make sure we get as much participation. Yeah, that was one of the first steps that we, we did was kind of make sure we garnered that support. If our principals didn't have the ability to support, or didn't have the time to make, to make that, one of the things we were doing this year, we probably would have, would have held off enough, enough, right, enough, right, into the group. So, because even with my kids in the district, the first person I would look to, with all due respect, I would appeal to the principal.
Yeah.
And again, his or hers opinion on what's happening.
Well-
So, I mean, I hope that's what happens for you.
Well, thank you. Well, I will say that, you know, one of the things that Dr. Perrin and I discussed as well is that I, so to get the parent letter, in the past, it's been successful if that parent letter is emailed to the parents, so they can check it on their phone, and they can look at things like, you know, when they get it. And then the informed, or the parental consent is actually on the phone as well, it's all electronic. And we've had good success with that, but it can't come from me because they're like, who's the stranger? And so in the past, we've sent it either through, the superintendent sends the letter via email, or it'll be the building principals that do it, or both. You know, either way, but I agree with you, that's also why I want ideally all three elementary schools on board, and all three principals said they would do this just because if we targeted one, there's not, I mean, we wouldn't have the sample size to do what we wanted to do, but hopefully with three, you know? So thank you, I hope the same thing you do, but we'll see.
Yeah, mine was more than trying to make the encouragement-
Yes.
-and have one of the principals in back.
Yeah, yeah.
If they've signed on, I am quite confident that you'll get nothing but a hundred percent.
Yeah, all three have signed on to this.
This is on, I mean, this can wait till the next meeting, that's what we have it scheduled for, but if there's a consensus and support, someone could make a motion to move to action. I would make that motion. I'd make a motion that instead of making this an informational item tonight, that while the, Mr. Humphrey's here, we would, we would vote-
Second, second. Is there any more discussion? So the information item is now moved to an action item. Are we ready for the vote? Okay. Start, Alice.
Yeah.
Al?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Sylvan?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Was that the move to action or to approve the study? That's what I said, that's what I said.
I think it was to move it to action.
Okay, it's easier to second vote to approve the study.
Right, so it's just action.
I make a motion to approve this study.
Okay, there's a motion.
That's all I did that, but okay.
It's okay.
Second.
I second those, though.
Okay, now, we have a motion on the board to put the, in action. Any, any more discussion, narrow good with that, right? Okay, Al?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Sylvan?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Alice?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Dr. Bartlett?
Thank you very much, everyone, thank you.
And hopefully, the extra, the extra time will help you all out.
Yeah.
We'll get started with the second.
I hope it, thank you.
All right, thank you, board members. All right, we'll move on to policy, item twelve point one, the overseas trip approval for the Spanish classes and the Spanish club.
Soon.
Second.
Discussion. Are you hearing none? Mike?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Sylvan?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Alice?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Next supplemental, item fourteen point one, the high school fall production director position.
Second.
Discussion. Is the fall production, is that a play? It's not a musical, is it?
That's, it's a play, my understanding would be, it's a play.
They have musicals in the spring. Any other questions? All right.
Actually, I'd like to say something, it's not a question, but it's just a comment. For the last, I don't know, five years, we've had a really wonderful director for our fall plays, Richard Soder, and I just would like to make a, put a comment of thanks to him for the very good work he did for us.
Hey, you know, good. All right, we'll take a vote. Jim?
Yes.
Sylvan?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Alice?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Brings us to business and finance, items seventeen point one to and including items seventeen point three. These are the three items that Carrie mentioned earlier. Do you stand a motion to accept those items?
Second.
Right, discussion.
Real quick question, oh, Mr. Humphrey, who worked on the copy of the proposal? Who was responsible for that?
I was primary, but the team included a elementary principal, the high school secretary, foreman, and the technology director.
Congratulations.
And it was actually a very easy decision.
I'm looking at, congratulations.
We prepared to expand the group, but there didn't seem to be any reason.
Whatever that group is, that was, that's actually a nice job on that, that's, I didn't realize the undertaking and expense, so nice job.
Following up on Kenny's comment, I just want to comment that I, obviously being a member of that committee, was in attendance at our last meeting when we discussed that, and having been in two different districts that did the same thing, I was thrilled to be hearing what I heard, and glad to see the same news are true in Pennsylvania as well as New Jersey.
My record was fifty-one point two seven percent. That's I have the same.
Any other comments or questions before we vote? All right, you're none, then we'll vote. Sylvan?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Alice?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And I vote yes. And that concludes all our business items for tonight. Under information items, hope you all looked at the district student enrollment. Is there anything else to the good of the order?
For any of the members?